Seven PM on February nineteenth and the planning commission meeting for Emmitsburg is here underway. We'll start with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first thing is the review and approval of our last meeting's minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments to make on this?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the minutes of January twenty-third.
I will second.
Hey, we have a first and second to approve the minutes. We have a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Minutes are approved by the zero. And do we have anybody online that wants to make a public comment? If we have no one to make a public comment, we'll move on to any of our old business. The first thing we have is the the planning commission rules and procedures that discuss the changes. So everybody should have gotten the copies with the changes marked in color there and new copies in red were handed out to you from the email and then you have hard copies tonight. Are there any questions and concerns and I'll see if Commissioner Long had question concerns. I know this is a lot of personal interest to him.
Yeah, I think all the changes that were made were things that I was recommending. And then it looks like the county attorney offered a little more clarification to how the cross examination process works and and when it applies. So this all looks good to me.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? The current test?
Yes, um. Item two point four. I mean, it's not a big deal, but it says in the middle of that paragraph that we're going to announce a special meeting via radio. Do we want to take radio out there just to be current with the times?
I I think they've checked what's the the county's thing because I think the county still uses via radio and the public announcements. I don't know if they actually do it, but it's been a couple of years since I read theirs and how they were doing it. But I know they were doing the public comments and they even put it on the the public access cable channel announcements.
Right.
Yeah, but do that.
But we aren't announcing it via radio and these are our rules.
Yeah.
For how we want the meeting to run.
Right. So what?
If there's no objection, I think we just take it out.
Yeah, so.
I would agree with that.
Any other concerns or objections about removing that language? Okay, take that out then.
Two point seven. Uh, keep a true and accurate record of all proceedings, special meetings, workshops and site visits. Have we ever had a site visit? What would constitute a site?
Um. The tour in area, I think we had one years.
Been quite a while.
Yeah, but we did did a walk of the grounds.
Really?
Yeah, because there was some question about it. Or you could do a site visit for properties coming in behind Emmitsburg glass. If you've walked anything over there, they have the fire hydrants in lines. And I know a number of us have walked those grounds at different thing. So if three of us were to get together and say, hey, we want to meet to walk that, that's a slight visit.
Yeah.
Because you have a quorum. Right. So you can run it, but it's been years since we've done it. Um, and the commission got in a lot of trouble many years ago as Brookfield was being developed because a number of this board's commissioners and town commissioners got together with the developer to walk the lots and determine, could there be an exception in the size of lots? And it got in a lot of trouble. Because it was a public meeting, you know, in a number of ways.
Yeah, you have to be careful about how that's done, but it's, I haven't had any site visits, officials, a site visit since I've been on the commission.
Yeah, it it's been a number. I know officially the one was before Mark or I.
Yeah.
Were on the board.
Okay, I guess we can leave it in there because if we were to take a site visit, then go to a site visit, we would just have to record.
Yeah, if it was there and we have a lot of stuff that's could be coming up, you know, with the distillery and possible development of other land and everything if people want to actually see what's going on and see the distances between things. And they want to walk it or have concerns that after they see the plans, I'm like, oh, this doesn't make sense to me. And I don't want people lost just on blueprints and feel they don't have a feel for what it is. Because I know Mark historically, I've seen him out there walking all the lots and everything and looking at things and taking blueprints with him. So yeah, I want to encourage people to go out there and do that. And if there's questions, maybe it takes the group of us with the go out there and say, well, this is where we feel this is going in. The blueprints may be off and everything. It won't be the first time.
Okay. And then, um, four point four. So if there's a conflict of a financial interest or conflict of interest, it says the commissioners shall recuse themselves and not attend that portion of any meeting or engage in any discussion. We went around and around about this particular particular item at the board of commissioners meeting when we discussed the rules of procedure. And it was verified by the attorney that the commissioner can attend the meeting. Um, they do not have to leave the room during the meeting. So I would like the language here to match what we put in the rules of procedures for the board of commissioners. So the commissioner can't participate, but you can, you are not required to leave the room.
So I know our town attorney, when we had an issue because it affected me particularly and I wasn't going to come to the meeting. And she advised at that time, I could come to the meeting, I could ask questions, I just was not allowed to vote. Was her stance at that time because I wasn't going to come to the meeting whatsoever. Because I thought, everybody knows where I stand on the issue and I thought it was wrong. You know, it's being a judge before you hear the facts. But the the difference was they could attend, could ask questions, but I couldn't vote. So the town commissioners have now put that language in theirs.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should keep that in sync with everything. As I'm sure the attorneys have already gone overall.
Yeah.
With a five tooth comb.
And then, um, I know with the board of commissioners, we had a section on workshops. Do we want to add that? We see this past year, we've had a lot of workshops. Um, there may be a need for workshops going forward. Would it be useful to have a section for workshops?
I I have we ever had a workshop that's a planning commission? I know we have the workshops for the plan, but that's not a planning commission workshop per se.
Uh, when we do did the flexible zoning ordinance.
Yes.
That's one. Yeah.
Remembered something.
Yeah.
At least one. It seems like there might have been something before that time.
Yeah.
We haven't had many, but.
Yeah, that's why I don't, you know, I remember ones that work.
And so there, since you aren't really voting on, can I speak?
Yeah.
Since you aren't really voting on anything and taking no action. I'm not sure it really needs to be in our procedures. It's just something that the town planner says, well, let's have a workshop or or we request a workshop and you have a workshop.
Yeah.
Um.
So we don't want any rules in terms of how we run the workshop, whether or not we take edits, whether or not we accept public comment, whether.
Nothing besides normal rules of.
Robert's rules of order.
Of running a meeting. I mean, it depends what the topic is, but, um, I mean, the county has workshops very frequently. County planning commission, um, and I'm trying to think if it's even in our rules of procedure.
Yeah, so.
I don't recall that it is.
Yeah, if it's not stated, it typically you then fall back to Robert's rules of order as what is, you know, the default back to unless you specify something else and everything. And I don't know if the town for the commissioners has rules.
For workshops?
Yeah.
I think we add, it was added, wasn't it? I didn't bring that with me for the, um, the rules of procedure for the commissioners. Was there a section in their own workshops? I feel like there was, but.
I can't remember off the top of my head, but I can look it up. That's good.
I don't.
Did you have any?
I feel like there was, but I I don't have it in front of me.
You have any other?
Um, that's it.
Or comments?
No, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Um. One that I had is go back to three point one. So it says that if you're bringing something, you have to be here or it can't, the can't go forward. And since we did go forward, the other meeting with one of those, if they weren't here. Um. Do we want to make that, keep that as a hard rule since we kind of violated that?
I thought the same thing, but it does say public hearings.
But it says the petitioner applicant or authorized agent, so be here. So if I have somebody looking to develop something and they aren't here and we have the plans. And at the other meeting, we went through, we had the plans. We tried to get the petitioner, he couldn't make it here in person. We tried multiple times to get him online. We were unable to get them online. And then we had sent it just to vote on it anyway. And I was, so when this one came up and I'm reading that, I'm like, so we kind of blew by this at our last meeting. Do we want to keep that in there? Commissioner Long?
So that was kind of an unusual circumstance. I mean, I think the applicant intended to be online and we were having technical or he or they were having technical difficulties. But it it does get back to exactly what constitutes a public hearing. Is every matter that comes before us a public hearing or is it only special circumstances that are what are public hearings?
So you know, when you do the procedure, like, you know, close the meeting and have a public hearing for a specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything outside of that, it's just public comment, not public hearing.
So what we were having in that circumstance wasn't really a public hearing. When we were reviewing that site plan.
But we were vote, since we were voting on something, wouldn't that make it a public hearing? I would think if we weren't voting, you can say that, but once we're taking a vote.
Well, we always have public comment, but a hearing is a different kind of animal.
Well, that's why I was just, I and I don't know if we're taking a vote, does that make it a hearing?
Public, public hearings are are required for like zoning ordinance changes.
Yeah.
Um, and public hearings are advertised to the public in the newspaper. There's, you know, very special procedure set up for public hearings. So reviewing recommendations from town staff wouldn't constitute a public hearing.
But from a petitioner to say they want to build something, which was our case, we had somebody that says they would like to have an approval to move forward on their construction project. I was thought since we have to vote a yes or no to let them move forward, is that a public hearing?
So so all of our meetings are public.
Right.
And all of our meetings allow for public comment, but not all of our meetings are public hearings in the official sense. I think it goes back to what the attorney said in three point five where she talks about quasi judicial hearings such as zoning classification and floating zoning approval. So whenever we're in a quasi judicial mode and that's when we're having the public hearing, I think.
I I think that's correct.
Okay.
So I thought the same thing when I initially read that.
Yeah.
Well, wait a minute, we we approve stuff all the time.
Yeah, right.
Then I realized it was specific to public hearings.
Right, so.
Which are not as frequent.
Ordinance changes and.
Right. Sometimes it's just changes or recommendations or.
Yeah, since I've been on the commission, there's only been a few times where we were swearing people in where we were having official hearings. When I can think of a handful, if even that.
Yeah, the flex zone, we had a public hearing when we reviewed defense ordinance, there was a public hearing. So if there's going to be a change in ordinance.
Again, the gun ordinance.
The gun, yeah, the gun was a public hearing.
Um, so so those kind of things.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But just a regular site plan isn't considered a public hearing as far as I know, I'm not the attorney, but.
Yeah.
I think that's the difference.
Okay. So any other comments or questions people have with the proposed changes? So considering that, do we have first to accept the changes? Because we will need to send this to the board of commissioners, Michelle, correct?
Right, you don't have to.
We don't have to, we can approve them ourselves?
Yeah, it's yours. So it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve the changes?
Make a motion to approve the suggested changes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, with the first and second.
Could I get a clarification on what you were saying about four point four before I vote?
Yes.
In the recusal, could you repeat again what you were suggesting to do there?
So, um, the commissioner would not have to, uh, the commissioner could stay in in the meeting. They would not have to leave, leave the meeting for that discussion item.
Would they leave the the Diaz?
Um, I don't know if we specified that. And I'd have to look at the language for the board of commissioners because originally the town attorney had it in there that if there was a conflict of interest, the commissioner would leave the meeting room.
Yeah, and that's the way the county does it.
Um, but it was clarified that the commissioner does not have to leave the meeting room. They simply cannot, they can't participate in the discussion.
So I know, and the perfect example was the the vote on the gun. Everybody knew where I stand and my interests were entangled with it. And the town's attorney said, yes, I could be at the meeting. Yes, I could sit up here. No, I could not vote, but I could ask questions. I couldn't take over. But I was allowed to ask questions, but it was definitively, I couldn't vote, I couldn't make a motion on it.
Yeah, the bottom line was it's a public meeting and you cannot be told to leave the public meeting. So we could simply change the sentence to read, um, in such event, the commissioner shall recuse themselves. And not engage in any discussions with other commissioners about the matter. So just take out where it says and not attend that portion of any meeting. Does the alternate then sit in for the commissioner that has recused themselves as part of the vote? Well, I don't know. That's a very good question.
I think you can't have them vote and I I I will go back to our gun vote. You know, I think it was really clear that I shouldn't be allowed to vote in that issue.
So I don't, didn't mean to go down into the weeds too far, but did you have a financial conflict?
I I had involvement with the range if it were to open.
Okay.
So even if you were to recuse yourself, we would still have a quorum.
Right.
Be available.
Right.
To carry on the vote.
Right. So you count as a quorum, but you not, you're a non-voting member. Because the quorum is who's in attendance. So you you don't change the quarrel numbers, but you cannot vote, you cannot make a motion.
So I think we just need to remove the part that says and not attend that portion of any meeting.
And that's the the currently, so that's that's not a change we were talking about. But I would not object that we move in that you can't attend that portion because I know particularly the town attorney had told me that I could attend a meeting because it was a big issue that I wasn't going to attend. But I'm just. You you can't vote, you can't make motions.
So shall recuse themselves and not engage in any discussions?
Or vote.
Yeah, probably vote needs to be put in there too.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't say and vote here now because you're being requested to leave the room. So it's kind of.
Yeah, but I think we can add that as thing, but when you shall recuse themselves.
That should imply that.
Imply, but there's nothing wrong, but if if, you know, just for clarity, if we add and a member cannot vote, or I would even put in a cannot vote or make motions. That if you're going to put the particulars in there about you can't vote to make sure it's clear. I think it should also be that language that you can't make motions.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure we were clear on that.
That's that's clear.
Because as as it happens in the county, I mean, we have a builder on our commission.
Yeah.
And sometimes we're approving plans for that builder.
Right.
And that builder has to leave the room when we're doing this.
Yeah.
It's a very, very clear conflict.
Yeah.
That that person isn't even to be around.
Right, yeah, that's why it it's, I was stunned over the whole gun issue because I wasn't going to attend. And it was a big issue about me not attending. I think it was part, were they going to have a quorum or anything? But she was like, yes, you can attend. Yes, you can ask questions, you shouldn't make emotions, you shouldn't vote, but you could if you wanted, since I didn't have a financial interest. But I felt I recused myself and we wouldn't vote because I just didn't feel comfortable with it because of my entanglement. So we, everyone good with making those changes or wanting something else? Okay, you have that, Michelle?
Yeah, I do. Um, so you want me to bring a edited one for the next meeting? That's when you're voting or you're voting based to adopt it like tonight?
Right, so let's.
We already have a motion in the second.
Yeah, we have a motion in the second. So this will just be clarification of everything. So we put it down there, just make sure that there was, everybody agrees with how it was written with the changes we're discussing tonight.
Okay.
In the final, okay, we have a first and a second. So all in favor of these changes, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. No nays, the motion carries five to zero. Excellent. Our list is to go over the comprehensive plan update and I'll turn that over to staff.
Hi, so, um, what you have in front of you is the current draft of the comp plan. And there's a placeholder for a letter from the mayor and the executive summary. And then we started redrafting the introductory chapter to include the introduction of the comp plan and, uh, the organization of the document. Um, we'll also add a brief overview of the town. Um, and then chapter two hasn't been changed. I know there are some, uh, issues with the legend and we'll be addressing that uh, for legend for the one of the graphs for age, age and gender profile. Um, we added chapter three, um, economy and fiscal health to discuss the economy of the town. Um, there's a pie graph or pie chart with the breakdown of business establishments by sector within the corporate limits of town. Um, and then we will also add a list of all the businesses as of twenty twenty-four, uh, for context. There's also information about workforce. Um, there's charts showing place of employment and most people and the fact that most people work outside of Emmitsburg. Um, one correction to be made is, um, the sentence on page thirteen, data indicates that nearly a quarter of the working population commutes outside of Metzberg. It should be nearly three quarters because most more people are, yeah, so, um. And then there's also information about median household income and we're gathering in data for, uh, uh, what you call it, sorry, town fiscal health, um, so property assessment and things like that. Um, then for chapter four, uh, we made some changes by adding maps, the watershed maps. And we filled in some of the sections that were not done before, like groundwater. Um, and the fact that half of the town's water supply comes from groundwater. Uh, we also added the hundred year floodplain map and some information about that. And all maps are going to be added as an appendix, so it's going to be in the text and then the appendix for people to like refer to it later. Um. Then. Chapter five, um, most of the changes include adding zoning maps. So we have the zoning map that we finalized, um, early last year. Yeah. And we also added information about the growth boundary. Um, a map that was adopted in twenty twenty-one. And it includes in, uh, different parcels and information about that too. Um. Chapter six is in progress, it's going to address housing. And chapter seven. I believe there were no changes, but there will be some coming soon. Sorry, those are the major changes that I have.
Okay. Any of the commissioners have questions or comments on anything? Yes.
So one of the changes, proposed changes prior to this meeting was the moving the male and female wording so that they coordinate with the actual color.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so when I'm reading this and I don't know what the other commissioners think about this, the tables specifically in the first part. Um. The colors are very similar. And when we get into employment sectors and workforce employment and income and even the business establishments, the colors, like when when we have the legend and the color identifying what it relates to, it gets a little, they look kind of the same at a smaller scale. Is it possible to maybe more colors that are a little bit different from each other? So it's easier to identify.
Yeah, that's possible. I know I have like different shapes of shades of purple, but instead of that, I can have orange, purple, pink.
Um, that are opposite of each other.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments? Fisher Tarquist?
Um. I did review the whole thing. I think we were supposed to maybe. So I do have multiple comments. I'll just say that upfront. Um, okay, page four. Um, I, the chart in the middle of the page. So it says total population and then there's a footnote that says number one. And then it says at the bottom, town of Emmitsburg, fifteen comprehensive plan. Is that saying that the population numbers from nineteen sixty to twenty twenty were pulled from the two thousand and fifteen comprehensive plan? Doesn't make sense to me.
Oh, so, um, they they were pulled from the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, but they were pulled by, um, Mr. Chris Jakubiec before that, when he worked on the two thousand and nine, so information just got transferred. So, um, this is the information that we could find regarding population from nineteen sixty. Um.
For the census doesn't go back that far.
Not for all towns are, um, yeah. At least for nineteen sixty. And I believe until nineteen seventy, but I can double check that.
But twenty twenty would have been pulled from the census report.
Right. We can add a footnote or add that note there to reflect that it's been pulled from the census.
And then I was wondering what the formula is to calculate.
And then I was wondering what the formula is to calculate the average growth rate.
Um, sorry, I can't.
There must be a formula.
Yeah.
I couldn't figure it out.
Um. It's current population over past population times one hundred? No. Sorry, I can't remember at the moment, but.
I can come back to that.
Yeah, sure.
Um. I mean, we don't. Page six. Um, the the second figure needs to be relabeled figure two point four. So I think going when you go forward, just double check all the figures and and the table numbers because some of those are not um, they need to be updated. And then I had the same comment about about the colors. It becomes hard to read. Um. And then page eight. So it's a the table says age and gender profile twenty twenty. But if you turn to the next page, the the charts are labeled differently. So if we could use the same header. I guess the first one should say population of Emmitsburg by age and gender twenty twenty, so they match the two that follow.
Um.
Page ten. Uh, there's a block in the middle of the page. It says median age years forty point two, male thirty seven, female forty two. And it looks like it's referring to table two point two. Should that be figure two point five? Like I was trying to to figure out what that referred to in the document.
So there's a numbering system for the figures and like the charts and then tables for two different ones. Um, there's table one on the first page of chapter two. That's table one. And then table two is on page ten, whereas the charts, their figures as opposed to table.
Also, you're saying that that particular block is table two point two. Okay, that that's where I was confused. And then in the bottom paragraph on page ten. Uh, the to do. As noted in the two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan, the reorganization of the members of daughters of charity. Um, how did that increase? How did that reorganization increase the female population over the age of eighty? What was the reorganization? So the relatively high portion of the female population over the age of eighty could be attributed to higher life expectancy and the reorganization of the members of daughters of charity.
Looks like it's referencing something in the two thousand fifteen.
But it's referring back to the female population over the age of eighty and higher life expectancy.
Hmm.
I think it seems out of place. And in the section previously, we had information about um the housing options for Mount students. Um, which is no longer here. It I think it was referencing um the numbers for the for the younger population. We had a reference in the old document about um, Mount students.
The older version of this document or the two thousand fifteen?
This one, this one.
Yeah. I I have to look at. I'm not sure how we could pull. The census wouldn't have that, so I'm not sure even how to get it.
I think there was a reference to it in the other document. A lot of this has changed, so it's.
Uh, we're also trying to move housing information to chapter six, so.
Prominent age group falls within the twenty to twenty four range, possibly due to the town offering housing options for Mount St. Mary's University students.
Did we determine that the the students were not um they weren't recorded as
Part of the population.
Part of our population because they're recorded as part of the population from where they come from.
Right, yeah. I think that was the reason um, we moved it and tried to add it to housing instead of putting in population.
Okay, so it's gonna be in the housing section.
Yeah.
Um, page eleven. Housing in Emmitsburg. I think it's probably supposed to be housing occupancy in Emmitsburg. And a surplus of fifty nine housing units. I remember this confused me once before. Does it mean we have fifty nine housing units in Emmitsburg that are vacant?
Per the census, yes.
Per the census.
Yeah.
Page twelve, economic structure. Um, change that word predominant to predominantly. Page thirteen. Um, so it says twenty seven percent of our population works in Emmitsburg. That would be seven hundred and eighty three people. Is that correct? That sounds really high.
Um, that's per the twenty twenty two American Community Survey estimate.
What is the survey called?
Uh, American Communities uh, Survey.
That seems really high.
So what did you say the number would be?
Um, twenty seven percent of the Emmitsburg population would be seven hundred and eighty three people.
But you can't count the whole population. Have the workforce. You don't count children, which are in the population.
Well, it's Emmitsburg residents, so twenty seven percent would even be a higher number than if we're only counting adults. You really think that many people, twenty seven percent of our of our adult population in Emmitsburg works in Emmitsburg?
I think you're probably at about three to four hundred, then once you take out the working population and have to work the numbers and it's easy to get three or four hundred people that live here that work in town. Because we sit at all the part time workers. Count is working in here. So if you look at the number of part time jobs at Jubilee or here and there, you know, it's
Self-employed.
Yeah, self-employed or you work for our construction companies that are headquartered here. They count as working in Emmitsburg, even though they may never touch a job site here.
Okay, employment sector is on the same page. Um, so if you look at the graphs, I would think that it should add up to a hundred percent uh, across the various categories. So like for Emmitsburg, employee employee of private company is looks like seventy five percent. Self-employed and own business looks like twenty five percent. Shouldn't the various categories add up to a hundred percent? For employment sectors?
Um, I don't think they have to because some people who are self-employed can also be uh, employer of a different cop or private company. Um. But this is also from the um, the American Community Survey. The numbers are.
So people could be in multiple categories.
Right, yeah.
Um, page seventeen. Under groundwater, um, second line should say impervious surfaces. Uh, page twenty one, the middle of the paragraph, the end of the line where it says the town enforcing regulations. Should say enforces. Page twenty three. Nearly all low, nearly all low density resident residential expansion has extended from the village center mainly towards the north. I think that should be the west at the top of page twenty three. Page twenty six. Uh, middle of the page, office, research and industrial should say O R I instead of I P. The bottom of page twenty nine. These areas are included to ensure continuity. I think it's just a misspelling. Uh, the bottom of page thirty three, the last two paragraphs sound very similar. I don't know if we can kind of condense one or the other. The two paragraphs at the bottom of page thirty three, the circulation and the automobile usage.
I believe the second to last paragraph was meant to be a summary of both automobile and uh, alternative transportation. But I can see why it sounds repetitive.
Um, something I didn't know, it says that um the water from the lake is treated using a LG Sonic device, which is connected to satellites and operated by town staff in collaboration with a company in the Netherlands. Are are we still in collaboration with a company in the Netherlands? And is that um through a contract or a handshake or what? What is that? It's on page thirty nine. Halfway down first paragraph. In collaboration with a company in the Netherlands.
Um, if I got this information like mid last year or maybe in September of last year from the water and sewer department. Um, but I can double check to see what has changed since then.
If it's still a collaboration with this this company, you probably should just put the name of it in there so folks know who it is.
And then on page forty, we talk about the two de- deputies that are assigned to Emmitsburg. Or do we have twenty four hour police protection around the clock? Does anyone know?
No, the the current thing is we do not have twenty four hours.
So it's like nine to five?
Yeah.
It's probably up until like one or midnight. So it's like starting at real early in the morning, right? Six or seven, there's all the way up.
To eleven. I think it's six to eleven.
And then the then Frederick County steps in.
Right.
No, thank you. I didn't know. Okay, we're getting close to the end. Let's see. On page forty four. North Seton Avenue. Um, it says it serves as the initial roadway leading into the first town in Maryland. Do we need to put US fifteen business south? Because if you're coming north, we're not the first town in Maryland.
So. So, yeah, I made a number of comments online and I think Michelle has seen them. She incorporated some of them, but I I commented about that also. Needs to be clarified that coming from the north were the first town in Maryland.
And then that bottom paragraph, West Main Street, um, they talk about low density residences within the Brookfield subdivision to the west. I I I wrote west. What did it say before? To the north. I wrote west, so it's we're talking about.
Well, it's to the north of one forty.
Yeah.
It's talking about West Main Street, which is one forty and Brookfield lines to the north.
North. Um, page fifty, um, under our initiatives. Do we want to put in our twenty twenty three light replacement? We had talked about um energy efficiency in the last paragraph that we reduced. Somewhere in here, it talked about we had replaced our lights previously. Well, that same year, the town replaced all its streets light, streetlights with energy efficient LED light bulbs, blah, 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 blah. Do we want to put in there that we replaced our lights in twenty twenty three? And how that um falls into the energy efficiency? I mean, it's something we did, so it's worth. That's it.
Anyone have anything else?
Um, as part of, sorry.
Let's go ahead.
Part of sustainability initiatives, um, do we include the community legacy grant in that section? Yeah, sorry, fifty.
It's all in here somewhere, I I just don't remember what part was that.
I think they it they touched on it briefly when talking about the town square revitalization. But didn't really expand it to include the historic revitalization for um citizens.
Okay.
Their own residences.
Anything else?
So as I mentioned a minute ago, I did make a number of suggestions online. Nagila had shared the document with us, so I made online online. Um so I'd have to pull out my computer to remember what they were, but you saw them were.
Yeah, I did.
Um so so I did make some comments about other people's comments also that were online. I don't know who was making them. But I I didn't quite agree with some of the other comments. I'm not sure who that was, but for one thing, somebody was saying that daughters of charity. D should be small in daughters and it is not. It's it's a formal name, that's their order's name. And uh some suggestions were made where we were talking about acreage, they were alluding to other. Of types of acreage like the size of the Pentagon and referencing that, so you'd know how much so many acres was, which. Referencing the Pentagon is meaningless to me, I or or the park in Chicago. Didn't make any sense at all to me, so I I didn't agree with those comments. Whoever made.
They don't ring a bell.
But uh but you, I mean, in general, and with her corrections or additions or suggestions, uh you know, overall was pretty good.
Anything else from anyone? So Nagila, the the mayor's also also authorized a small group of people to. Do some and get some additional information. How's that gonna feed back into here? Because I know that's still ongoing.
Right, so if they can get their information by April. And we can, you know, kind of analyze that information. And, yeah. Um I wasn't aware of Diane's uh health condition, so maybe that's something we need to touch base on and.
Okay.
And have a more definite timeline.
Okay, yeah, I can talk, because I think it's five people in that group. Um I'll follow up and see the timelines. I know on the business side where the comments are coming from. But I don't know the other ones. I can touch base and see. I'll talk to Diane. And see, she may want to step out for a while, I would think. Let's see, you know, what we can do from there. I was just, since I know that was a small working group that's now have recognition, I just wanted to make sure. If there is that deadline, as you said, April, I'm not sure everyone was aware of that deadline.
Right, yeah, we can, we can talk about that and set that deadline. It's.
Okay.
Just before, so there's enough time to incorporate it before it goes for, um you know, the sixty day public comment period. So well before that.
Okay. So no other comments?
So just for information, our, there there's another um. Public meeting the end of this month, correct? Or next week?
Right, next week.
Yeah, it is coming. Um will we soon be starting to work on initiatives or or goals? Uh is I I forget what the plan is at this point.
Kind of the community initiatives and goals and stuff like that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. With no further questions, we want a new business. We have no new business. Unless anybody has a comment they feel they need to make now. That and thing. Um it's now seven fifty four and the meeting is closed.